The January 26, 2025 meeting of the Dallas City Council will come to order. Will the Secretary of Territory please call the roll?
Council President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Berantos?
Here.
Counselor Blaser?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jantz?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
I pledge the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to have the swearing in of the mayor and new city councilors and those who are returning. If you all want to, the new councillor and the three returning want to meet me out front of the dais, will get sworn in.
Okay, so I'll swear in the mayor first. You will raise your right hand after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Richard Slack, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Dallas.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Dallas.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge my duties as mayor.
Faithfully discharge my duties as mayor.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Congress Barry Antos, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Dallas.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Dallas.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As city councilmember.
As city councilmember.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Introductions, recognitions, or proclamations tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have any introductions, recognitions, or proclamations.
Now's the time for public comment. Please come to the center table, state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes. It's your turn to talk and ours to listen. You are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. The mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or for follow-up as needed. Tamatory or libelous comments are not being accepted. Extractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. First up is Ann Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. I'm Ann Hurd, president of the Dallas Aquatics, a friend of the Dallas Aquatic Center, and we are a nonprofit who raises money to facilitate anything, any operational things or maintenance items that need, are needed by the aquatic center. And there have been a lot lately because we're a 24, well, 25-year-old pool. Anyway, I gave, we gave you $5,000 into our trust fund at the December 9 meeting. We gave another $5,000 about a week before Christmas because donations had come in. And I just wanted to let you know that since July, when we started this fundraising campaign, we've taken in over $20,000 for the pool. $8,050 of that are banner renewals for next year. And that's almost half of our banners. We have 25 businesses that have banners up at the pool. And they pay those, many pay them early for the tax break. Anyway, and so then we've had another about $12,000 in donations from the people who use the pool and the people who support the pool. And so we're really happy with that because we've got enough, we've already fixed the outside door, the ADA door, that was almost $5,000. And we have the money to fix the check valve, which is about $10,000. And then we're about, almost $10,000 for the sand filters. So that was our original goal, was $15,000 for the sand filters. But anyway, also, we've partnered with the Polk Resource Center to, we have gotten a scholarship of $1,000 through the Dallas Methodist Church from Helen Williams, and that is for kids. And she wants it for swimming lessons, so we've printed up certificates. You can get $15, $65 certificates for swim lessons. That's nine lessons. And I'm taking them to the Polk Resource Center in Independence tomorrow, and they will hand them out, make sure the kids who are going to receive them get signed up to their classes and go to, make sure that they get to all the lessons that they're going to be provided with. And she said, and if it goes well, she'll do it again. So we're really happy about that. And yes, I wish I could think of something more, oh, I know what I want to say. Has nothing to do with the pool, but I don't like giving my address either. You'll notice I totally forgot about it tonight. It is on that card, so, you know, just my two cents on that. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Up is Robert Greenway.
2223 Southeast Academy Street, Dallas. Since there is one new council member, I guess it's no use going over what I've gone over for the past year. Mr. Blaser, welcome. I've sent you an email. Hopefully, you're willing to listen, or the other ones. It's been going on almost a year that I have spoken and never got any type of response from any of the council members for pertinent questions. So maybe you'll listen, but I think you would be outweighed by the other one. So even if you did listen, you probably couldn't do anything about it. Mr. Mayor, taking the place of the other mayor, so Mayor Trump, the Proud Boys, welcome you. And you know why I'm saying that, because I wrote you an email, too. And for the rest of you, we're going to go for another year with putting down that you said you would contact me if I have questions. Still waiting, nine, 10 months, 20 visits. If you were Tulsi Gabbard, Cash Patel, Robert Kennedy Jr., or Pete Hegseth, you might get put through, but you're already here, so I guess we're stuck with you. I am just totally disgusted with the whole situation that you can't even have the guts or the balls to even discuss the things that we have talked about in the past. You've been sitting there like bumps on the logs for almost a year, since I first moved here and decided to come to the city council meetings and put forth problems with certain parts of the way things are being done. But nobody after a year seems to care. So that's all I have to say for now, and I'll see you at the next meeting. One of you maybe will have the guts to stand up, meet with me in person, and discuss what needs to be discussed, instead of hiding behind nothing, not saying a damn word about anything.
Next up, I have Michael Holzapple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Michael Holzapple. I live at 290 Southwest Oregon Trail Drive. I'm here to talk to you today about something I know is not directly your responsibility, but I want to encourage your involvement in it. And that is the concern, the ongoing and growing concern of the intersection of Highway 22 and 51 and the lack of activity by the Oregon Department of Transportation with regard to that. My comments to you are that, as a member of the community and hearing from other members of the community, it's become an untenable situation that needs to be addressed. I know that the county commissioners have been constantly in contact with the Department of Transportation. I would encourage you to join with them and with the other communities that use those main thoroughfares between our bedroom communities and Salem. We use them daily for commuting to work, for shopping, for all kinds of things, and back and forth. And because of development and the increase in the number of people that live in these communities, there's an unexpected increase in the amount of traffic that's not, not at all planned for that area. And we've seen it in the past year and a half or so with the increased number of crashes, the increased number of vehicles involved in the crashes and that. And ODOT's response is, we don't have the money, we have a plan, and our plan is to maybe try to get some money in a few years. And a few years isn't going to do it. I know that the county is working directly with them to come up with some other alternative things. I would encourage you to jump on board with the commissioners. If you haven't already, reach out to Monmouth Independence and maybe a joint resolution or something. Something needs to be done to put pressure on ODOT, to make something happen there for the safety of the citizens that live in this community. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'd just like to add something, if it's, just for the record, our mayor was in a bad accident there the day before Christmas, and he's using a cane or a walker because of that. It's a bad intersection.
I'd just like to add one more thing, too. I spoke with Representative Andres Salinas, and I pointed out to her that one particular thing that's heavy on my heart is that intersection of Highway 22 and 51, and she is aware of it. And it's, we cannot stop addressing that issue. The minute that we stop, then nothing happens. The voices have to be loud so they can hear.
Can I hear a brief message paper?
We're going to go move on to the next person, Shelby White.
I am a peer support specialist for Recovery Outreach Community Center, also lead staff for our center that we have here in Dallas. And with the hardship of losing our facility due to county corrections, we have to find a new facility. Recovery Outreach Community Center serves as a beacon of hope for individuals in Dallas struggling with active addiction, recovery from addictions, mental health journey, and homelessness. This drop-in center provides a safe, supportive environment, offering essential services that address fundamental needs to of our peers. The significance of ROCK lies in the ability to provide a comprehensive range of services, including access to food, laundry, showers, which are often taken for granted by those with stable living situations. For individuals experiencing homelessness, these basic necessities are a luxury. The absence of such services would be expedited, their already precautious situations, forcing them to rely on makeshift arrangements that compromise their health, dignity, and overall well-being. The loss of ROCK services would be, would not only hinder their recovery journey, but also perpetuate the cycle of homelessness. Moreover, the peer support aspect of ROCK is a critical component of its success. The center's staff and volunteers, many of whom are in recovery themselves, provide a sense of community and understanding that is essential for individuals struggling with addiction and mental health. This is a peer-led model fosters a sense of belonging, encouraging others, encouraging individuals to seek help and support from those who have walked a familiar path. The transition into a new building in Dallas presents both opportunity and challenges. While a new facility may offer improved amenities and expand services, it also poses the risk of disturbing the continent of care and support that ROCK peers have come to rely on. It is essential that the center's leadership and stakeholders prioritize the needs of its peers during this transition and ensuring that the new facility is designed with their needs in mind and that the peer support aspect of the center is preserved. Ultimately, Recovery Outreach Community Center is more than just a physical space. It is a symbol of hope, a beacon of light in the darkness, and its service as a testament to the power of community and importance of providing comprehensive supports to those who need it most. As ROCK navigates this transition, it is critical that its stakeholders remember importance of preserving the center's core mission and services, assuring that most, that the most vulnerable members of Dallas community continue to have access to the supports that they so desperately need. My address is 1270 Picture Street, Independence, Oregon. My name is Shelby White. Thank you, guys.
Who'd like to give public comment? Do we have anybody on the phone? If not, we'll close the public comment and move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the Member 2024 Financial Report, approval of the December 9 work session minutes, approval of the December 9 council minutes, and an OLCC application for Court Street Puvin Grub full-on premises license. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I don't want to remove anything, but what does full-on premises mean?
So I can answer that. Counselor Fitzgerald, so a full-on premises license is a license that OLCC will allow a business to be able to serve alcoholic beverages from their business. And so that's just, it's a type of license. To all of our businesses that sell alcohol as part of their business, they have the full-on premise license.
It's David. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First item on that, Mayor Slack, is the council vacancy. So this is a report that was put together by myself. So when we had this last election in November, we had a council member that was elected from the public, his name is Troy Hazelton. And shortly after the election, but before tonight, Mr. Hazelton has moved his primary residence outside the city of Dallas city limits. That action results in Mr. Hazelton no longer possessing the qualifications for the office and creates a vacancy on the city council. I've listed Section 28 of the Dallas City Charter in the report, which talks about vacancies. And it says, "An office becomes vacant upon the declaration of the council after the incumbent ceases to possess the qualifications of the office." And again, by Mr. Hazelton moving outside the city limits, no longer qualifies for the office and therefore creates the vacancy. According to Section 28 of the city charter, the council will declare the position vacant. There is a recommended motion at the end of the report where the council can make that motion and declare that, officially declare that vacancy. However, previously, prior to doing that, Mr. Hazelton, who was elected by the people of Dallas, has requested just a few minutes of time before the council to kind of talk about the circumstances to leading to his moving outside the city. So if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'll invite Mr. Hazelton to come up and talk to the council.
Fortunately, I lost my voice, so I'm not going to be quite as loud as I normally am. I just have a couple of words I'd like to say. I'd like to address kind of what happened, but like I said, I just have a couple of words I wrote down. I appreciate everything that's happened, so anyways. So Winston Churchill once said, "We make a living by what we get, we make a life by what we give." When I think of Dallas, I think of this quote, because this town gives more than any other. They make it easy to start a life. So I thank you, citizens of Dallas, for electing me to the council. I'm honored to be chosen to serve you, which is why I asked to speak today. Just a little background information, me and my family, we purchased our forever home in November 15th, just off of Liberty Road, which I'm sure you're familiar with in Dallas. It's outside of Dallas city limits, so unfortunately, I wasn't, I'm not able to hold. As exciting as it was, it was a great disappointment to find out we were, I was going to be unable to serve as a councillor for this great city, as my new home doesn't fall within city limits. So I regret to inform you that I must resign. I thank you all for the opportunity and the support throughout this election. I will continue to serve the community in other capacities, and I hope to see you all around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelton. So if it's all right, I'm going to ask if the council will make that motion now, we can officially declare the vacancy, and then I can continue with how to fill that vacancy in a few minutes.
Jane.
I bear a vacancy on the Dallas City Council.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
But the minutes reflect that's Mr. Hazelton's vacancy that is being declared. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, once we have a vacancy, the city charter gives a little bit of insight on how to fill that vacancy, and that's in Section 29 of the city charter. It states in part, "Vacancies in elective offices in this city shall be filled by a vote of a majority of the incumbent members of the council." That's all it says. And so what that means is, the council really decides how you want to fill that vacancy. I've listed in this report some different ways that past vacancies have been filled, including just identifying a qualified candidate and then directing the city manager to solicit interest from that selected person prior to the vote, soliciting applications from qualified candidates, and conducting interviews with selected candidates is another way that that's been done. Alternatively, in the past, you've also, as a council, have selected just the next highest council or mayor candidate vote getter on the most recent general election. Those are the three most recent decisions that the council has made that have been different from each other. The council could select any of those processes, or you can choose a different process. It's really up to you. So tonight is kind of a critical time for the council to have a discussion on how you want to fill that vacancy, determine the process, and direct me or other staff members to implement that process, whatever that looks like. So in the event that you choose to solicit applications and interview folks, I've included some recommended interview questions. These are questions that have been utilized in the past when you've done interviews. The only recommendation that I have, being your staff, is to have a decision and go through the process pretty expeditiously. We have some major topics that are going to come before the council with some short timelines on making those decisions. You also have a council goal-setting retreat in mid-February, that it would benefit to have the full council participate in that decision. And so I would recommend that we identify a process tonight, we solicit applications if that's the process, or direct me to find someone, or however you want to choose, but that be done by January 21st, so by the next council meeting.
Question.
And with that, that's.
Yeah, without taking a position yet on what method we follow, have, has there been any contact with the next highest vote getters to see if they're interested? Has anyone spoken to them?
No, I have not spoken to any of the next highest vote getters on, on joining, rejoining or joining the council. I wanted to, you know, not presume anything that the council would do, so I really wanted to wait for tonight to see what the council decides as far as process, and then we can move forward from there.
Would you allow me to make a brief comment? During the summer of 2024, seven qualified candidates were vetted and then persevered through a highly selective process that ended in the election night of November 5, 2024. Citizen contacts and signature approval were among the requirements that formed the criteria that measured which candidate would be placed onto the election ballot. On November 5, 2024, citizens of Dallas collectively used their powers of the vote to fill the five open seats on the Dallas City Council. Therefore, by the grace of God, I was among five to fill the open seats for the Dallas City Council. This city council allows me to have a voice to represent the community. I allow myself grace whenever I use that voice. I also encourage others to use their voices in a respectful manner, regardless if they agree or disagree with the city council. I find that whenever I listen to the voices of others, I'm amazed by the collective experiences from different perspectives. Folks, the city councillors, folk and city councillors, there is a vacant seat to be filled on the Dallas City Council. Each councillor here was chosen through a succession of votes. In my very humble opinion, I believe Kirsten Collins is qualified to fill the vacancy by virtue of that succession rule and by receiving 4,278 votes for the citizens of Dallas.
I'll just bring up the history. We have filled it in succession one other time, and at that point in time after that was done, it was brought up by the previous mayor to the mayor that was previous to you, that we should not be doing it that way, that we should have a process that we go through and not to set it as a precedence. And so we, at that point in time, went out to an interview process. We've learned during that interview process that it's, that if we would go to a written interview process, so that the answers to questions could be put out to everybody, so that the individuals are answering those questions individually instead of as a group because of the public meeting laws, they're not allowed to answer, we can't have them leave the room. So it just kind of gets redundant by the end, time that gets down to the end. That's more of the presence that has been set in the past, what, two times now, that we've had a vacancy. So it's up to you, Ms. Councillors.
Yes, Debbie.
I think my concern with the written application.
I think my concern with the written application process is the time constraint, because we have so many really important things we're dealing with right away. So I know originally I was appointed and answered all these questions and then came in. And I think there were three or two other people, maybe, and it was really time-consuming to do the interviews and answer all the questions, then do the interviews, and then I was selected and sworn in. Have there been any individuals that have expressed interest from the community in general?
So yes, I would say I know that at least two people have reached out to me to express interest. In answer to your question, I didn't practically go out and talk to the next highest candidate. But I know that there are individuals that are interested in this. If we were, and as I mentioned in the report, if you want to do a solicitation process where you, you know, accept applications, you know, I'm recommending written responses to the questions instead of an oral interview, like the experience you went through, just so that we're able to ask all of the same questions to the same candidates, and they can kind of give their own unique answers without having to hear the answers of the other people before they give their, you know, answer in succession. So I think as far as timing goes, if we were, if we were to have a condensed timeline, which is what I'm proposing and recommending, we could solicit applications through the 15th of January. So that gives us about 10 days to solicit applications. And then, and included in those applications would be written answers to the questions that the council chooses tonight, if that's the route you want to go. So that way, you would have all the applications with the answers to the questions in the next council packet for the meeting on the 21st. You, as a council, would have time to read those, digest them, come to the meeting on the 21st with the opportunity to deliberate and decide that evening on who you'd want to have as the next councillor. If you went down that route and selected the next councillor, I would ensure that all of the candidates who applied would be here, so that we could actually swear that candidate in after they're voted on that night, and they would sit here. So in terms of expediency, I think we can make the process short and have someone sitting around the dais on the 21st.
So with the first option, identifying a qualified individual and then soliciting you, or asking you to solicit interest from that person, does that mean, like at this meeting, we could nominate or recommend someone, and then you would talk to that person, assuming the council agreed to that, you would talk to them? And if they're interested, then we would swear they win without the application process?
Yes. So the last time that happened is when there was a vacancy created, and a former city councillor who had just gotten off the council, the council decided, hey, Terry Crawford was the councillor, and the council decided when that vacancy was created, to say, hey, let's reach out to Terry and see if he's interested in rejoining the council. And that was the direction by the council to say, well, Brian, why don't you go ask Terry if he's interested? Because, you know, we had not done that previous to that meeting. And that was the direction you gave me as a council. I went out, contacted Terry, let him know that the council was interested in filling the vacancy with him. If he is interested in serving, he let me know that he was. I brought that information back to the council. At that next meeting, brought Terry here as well. The council voted that night to fill the vacancy with him. He was then sworn in and took a seat with the council. So that's how that first process that's identified here would work. So if you wanted to run that route, you could let me know tonight, you know, who you want me to solicit interest from. I can go talk to that person, see if they're interested, and then come back.
Mr. Shane.
The difficulty I have with that option, with the first one, is that if we reach, back up a step, as you pointed out, we need to do this not in haste, but as quickly as reasonably possible, because we've got a lot of important things coming up. We want a full council to deal with those things. The difficulty I have with the first one is that if we, if we identify a particular individual and reach out, and they say, no, I think, I think I like not going to meetings. I don't think I'm interested. Then we're back to square zero. We have to find another person, and we can't do it for another two weeks, because that's how often we meet. That's the biggest difficulty I have with that loophole there. And for that reason, I think I'm inclined to one of the other two options.
And that's what happened with the last appointment.
Terry Crawford situation, he was the only other candidate that ran at the time. So there were no other candidates. Well, this time, we've got a pool sitting, a lot of them in this room, that may want to be, have us take a second look.
I would just provide one little bit more context for Counselor Bantos's comment of Counselor, former Counselor Collins, being the next highest vote getter in the election on the council, is if you went through a solicitation process, that doesn't eliminate, you know, someone who ran to apply, right? So that's, you still have the opportunity for that individual to apply, to be, you know, considered by the council. So, you know, not saying that you can't do one over the other, but that's just, you're not eliminating a person by going a route of soliciting applications.
I would say you're not only eliminating one person, but you're eliminating 4,278 votes who supported that person. And by virtue of the seats that were available, they ended up six in a pooling of five. I strongly recommend that we go through the succession route. I think that is the best route to use.
Comment on that. If we go that route, and I'm not arguing against it, I'm just thinking of contingencies and making this process as, to use your word, expeditious as possible. If we go that route, I think we should contact all of the people on the ballot, because if the first highest vote getter says no, then you need to fall back position. And the quicker we're able to get through the process, the better. So if we go that route, I think we should talk to everybody in order and work that way, just to save time.
Another thought on that is you also had a second mayor candidate who used to sit on the council previously. And you might also consider that person who may be interested.
I have one last question, and then, and I think I'm done with that, after that. So actually, for the other councillors, is there anyone who has someone that we know is qualified that they would want to nominate for this vacancy?
Without having spoken to the person first, that's just me.
Seconded.
But if you can't achieve consensus, then I think a motion would be in order.
Michael.
Just having gone through the top, the first and the third ones, since I've been in, on my short tenure of six years, and having issues with both of those, I'm very much in favor of doing the second one, the solicitation, and doing our interviews pretty much through a written interview process. Maybe when they got to the office 21st, one or two questions we ask, just the solicitation process with the A through P questions that have been outlined.
Yeah, I would think that one or two questions would just be to confirm the impressions we've already gathered.
I have a suggestion on that, too. If, I'm in favor. I agree with, with both of you. So I'm in agreement that we solicit applications from qualified candidates, but instead of having them answer questions, I'd be in favor of them just reading a statement of, here's why, like a cover letter statement, because we would already have the answers to their questions, A through P, to be able to go through ahead of time. And then you, you read a lot from a person by, you know, what are your greatest qualities? Show me your cover letter. Basically, a short statement from each of them. Maybe select a top three.
For me.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the full process. So what I'm hearing is that you want us to solicit applications. If we do that, we'll solicit applications through the 15th of January. We will include in the solicitation the requirement that the applicants answer questions A through P that are identified in the staff report. We will also include and convey in an application process that they should come prepared on the night of the 21st to give a three-minute statement of why they want to serve on the Dallas City Council. And be prepared to take their seat, of course, if they're the selected candidate.
Yeah, that's good. And make sure that that three-minute time limit is in the instructions, so there's no ambiguity.
Yeah, you can time it, because I have a timer. That's right. Yeah, no, that's.
Let me just tell them upfront, so nobody feels sandbagged.
Yeah, for sure, I would do that. Does that sound like the right process? Kind of get consensus on that around the room?
For me, yep.
I highly dissent on this. I think you take away the vote of the citizens of the city of Dallas. And that vote is, this, that is a covenant thing that each citizen has. There's not much that a citizen can do, but they can elect their officials. And when you have someone that gets four, over, almost 4,300 votes, and, and they cannot accept, or they're not at least offered a position, that says a lot about the citizens, whether we're allowing the citizens to participate in this election process.
Since it seems like you have substantial, but not a perfect consensus, I think a motion would be in order. And the motion could be just to adopt the process that Brian has outlined, if that's what somebody wants to make. Or Carlos can make the motion for his preferred method.
I'll, I'll make the motion for what we have the consensus on, but I want to just make one short comment.
Let's get a second first. Is it a motion?
I move that we use the second of the three outlined alternatives, one that involves soliciting applications and then a brief interview or statement. And yeah, that one, the middle one. The one thing I would like to say on, to hopefully to cap this, I'm very much in sympathy with your point of view, because, you know, we live in a democratic government government, and the vote is what it's all about. At the same time, we don't live in a direct democracy. We live in a republic, and the idea is that the votes are, that we vote for people to make decisions for us. This is an unusual situation, a vacancy to fill. And I think you can make a strong argument, you can make a very strong argument for your position. I think you can make an equally strong one for the position that we here now are the elected representatives, and we've been hired to make decisions on more or less important matters, of which this is one. So I think you can, I think you make a case either way, but it seems that we have a consensus to go with the one that I made the motion on.
Seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Seven to one. Counting myself. That's right, we're missing somebody, right? Thank you, thank you, Larry. All right, moving on. The council president election.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. So just a brief introduction to this. So the city council president election by this charter, Section 18 of the Dallas Charter, states that at the first meeting of each odd number year, the council shall elect a president from its membership. In the mayor's absence from a council meeting, the president shall preside over it and shall be entitled to vote when presiding over the council as president in place of the mayor. Whenever the mayor is unable to perform the functions of the mayor's office, the president shall act as mayor, but shall not have the power of veto. Additionally, the council rules of procedure state the council president will act as sergeant-at-arms and will assist the presiding officer as appropriate to maintain order and decorum at all meetings. So that is the functions of the council president. Mike Schilling has been serving in that position for the last four years. But that doesn't mean he has to continue. So at this point, I'll turn the time back over to Mayor to solicit nominations.
nominations for council president? Yes, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Larry Briggs as council president. As has been said, I've been serving for four years. Larry is also at the same tenure as I am, minus two weeks. And he is senior to me, so I would love to see Larry serve as our council president.
Second on that. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd like to close the nominations. Can we accept the, as slate has stated?
Yep.
Congratulations, Larry. You're the new council president.
And you don't need to change seats tonight. It's okay.
It's from city manager and staff, city committee, commission, and board appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. So at the end of each calendar year, we have positions on our committees, commissions, and boards that generally will expire. This year is no exception. And so in the recommendation from staff, we recommended the city council appoint individuals to open positions on the budget committee, of which there are four positions open, the economic development commission, which also has four positions open, the library board, which has two positions open, and the historic preservation commission, which has one position. Mayor Slack has recommended the following individuals to fill vacancies on the economic development commission, the library board, and historic preservation commission. Those are outlined in Table 1. I won't read through those, but they're listed there. Beyond that, the budget committee has three candidates. They're listed on Table 2 for the positions there. As I mentioned in the beginning, there are four positions available for that, so we still need to fill one position on the budget committee for people in the room who might be interested. And with that, there's a recommended motion on page 41 of the packet.
Question? Go ahead, Larry.
Brian, are there anybody not on this list that had applied that just wasn't picked?
No, everyone, all the applications are included as attachments. So for every position that's available, all the applications are included.
I move to approve. Do we need two separate motions? One for the library, one for the budget committee, or?
I think you could take them both I think you take them both, to approve the, to approve the nominations as stated in the staff report of January 6.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion?
I have a question. So, that we have one vacancy on the budget committee?
Well, after all the appointments are made tonight.
So, does that person need to live inside city limits, or no?
The budget committee is required to live inside the city limits.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. What's up next, legislative lobbying.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. So, the legislative session for the Oregon State Legislature is just about to open, opens a little bit later this month, and so, oftentimes, there are bills and, and topics that are applicable to the city of Dallas, that we want to be interested in participating legislatively. The challenge that we've encountered in the past is that the, the timing of the legislature, they actually move really fast. It's the one thing in government that happens really quickly. And so, the timing of when a bill is presented in a committee and they are asking for feedback in the terms of testimony, often can be, you know, 24 to 48 hours. That doesn't always align up with when we have council meetings. And so, in the past, what we have done is to create a, a situation where we can respond in an efficient manner to legislative topics and, and bills that we are, that we care about, either to support or oppose. And how we've done that in the past, in the last few sessions, has been to just appoint the city manager as kind of the lead lobbyist for the city, and then have the city council be advisors to the city manager on the topics of the bills and, and proposals before the Oregon Legislature to provide feedback, right? Hey, we're interested in this, here's what we care about, here's the things that we should talk about. And then, I'm, I'm responsible then for making the decision on actually testifying, providing the testimony. In some instances, I've, I've asked councillors or the mayor to join me in providing testimony, sometimes in person, sometimes by written form. I've also engaged city staff to provide written testimony, but that's kind of how we've done that before. It allows us to just be more responsive to the, the bills that come before the Oregon Legislature, so that we can respond again in the timing that they require. So, my recommendation tonight would be to just seek consensus from the council on appointing the city manager as the lead lobbyist for the city of Dallas, to have the city council serve as advisors to the city manager for the lobbying efforts for the city of Dallas for this legislative session.
Do you just have consensus on that?
I do.
Discussion?
So, these, these, these bills, or? Would, would you bring those to the council and add as a whole, and we would discuss them and give you, or we would have our individual opinions given to you?
So, what I would do, what I've done in the past, is often this is done through email communication, so I will get, you know, maybe it's a bill we're tracking, and, you know, the committee will drop the amendments, you know, 48 hours before the next committee meeting, and so, you know, I'll review those amendments, I'll send an email to the council and say, hey, here's this bill, here's the good things that it's doing, or maybe it's a bill that we don't like, and so I'll mention those things. I'll put together some maybe points of consideration for testimony. I'll then ask, you know, the council, how do you feel about this? Is this something that we should support, that we should oppose? How do you feel about the talking points? Are there additional talking points that I should, you know, be considering? And then the feedback is given just through email exchange, and then with that feedback that I get from the council, you know, I'll make the decision on, you know, providing that testimony, putting it together, and submitting it.
Mr. Shane.
Just a brief comment, this has worked well, we've done it before, I, I think we should keep doing it, because if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But just in passing, we had some testimony earlier tonight about the 2251 intersection, and that's on everybody's mind for all the reasons that we all know and needn't rehash. But I, I'm gratified to see that both the city's priorities and the LOC priorities include funding for transportation. So, any opportunity you get in this process to, to add to the fire under that, please don't pass up the opportunity.
Yeah, certainly, and then, as the council knows, later this month is the city day at the Capitol, is the event where all the cities and elected officials and staff kind of, you know, storm the Capitol, and we have meetings set with our legislators and senators, so that we can advocate for those positions, including, you know, that particular interchange, and other projects and priorities for the city of Dallas. So, we'll have opportunities to meet with them, discuss our needs, but then throughout the session, as that's going, you know, at the oftentimes sprint pace that they do, we'll be able to navigate that and provide additional feedback and testimony.
And in addition to that, I've been serving on the MWAC committee as an alternate, which is the transportation committee, where we speak directly to ODOT, and 51 is the middle limited areas' number one priority.
Yeah, but it all depends on funding, which is why we need to do this, too.
But the acts have, just so you know the history behind it, the acts have been working really close together, and that's how the Dundee actually got their money for it. I know it's taken a lot of money, but the acts actually see 51 as one of the highest priorities, if not the highest priority. ODOT has a really weird way of listing priorities, so please continue. All the different people write letters to your representatives and continue to put pressure on it, because, I mean, as the mayor's limping around from being in an accident on Friday the 13th, it's a dangerous intersection, we all know it. There is some small hope going on that I, if I could address it this time also. ODOT will be creating a no-left-hand turn, both off of the street across from 51 and off of 51 itself. Polk County has allowed them to take Greenbrier, I think is the road, allowing a county road to be used as a state highway, and so that the left-hand turn can go off a Greenbrier. So, majority of those wrecks, a large portion of those wrecks are caused by left-hand turns. So, and people get impatient, and they pull out, and I don't know what happened, but we're happy that you're here.
Every little bit helps.
I'll also just add in the report on page 67, you'll notice that our, our top five priorities included infrastructure funding, restoration of recreational immunity, the alcohol tax changes, transportation funding package, and lodging tax flexibility. Four of those five were actually adopted by the League of Oregon Cities as their legislative priorities, and so, the alcohol tax being the exception. I've already talked with a representative on the alcohol tax, and we've come to some agreement on how we can make some amendments there that she's certainly in support of. So, you know, we have, I think, a strong showing for the things that matter to this group around the table, also matter to other cities throughout the state, so that's a good thing. You'll also notice on the, on the League's top kind of nine choices that they came up with, the final one was amendments to ORS 195-530, which was the Johnson v. Grants Pass. If you'll recall, earlier this, well, at the end of last year, middle, middle end of last year, the Dallas City Council sent a, a letter to the Oregon legislative leadership, as well as our legislator and senator, really addressing that topic and advocating for some changes to that, that law as well. So, that was also included in the League's top priorities, but something that we're passionate about as well, so.
Do you have a comment over here?
So, Brian, this would designate you as the city's lead lobbyist. Do you have some succession planning if you're not available, or is there somebody in your place that could take your place if you're not available?
Yeah, so certainly, you know, in the event that I'm, you know, out of the office on a day where testimony's due, you know, I just delegate that to, you know, our assistant city manager. Oftentimes, this may be an economic development initiative that we're providing testimony on. I've talked to Charlie about that and said, hey, let's submit testimony, so he's done some work on that. If it's a public safety issue, we could have our fire chief or police chief, you know, provide testimony, so, you know, there will be a staff member that can provide that testimony in my absence, for sure.
Do we have consensus on that? All right. And move on. First reading ordinances, we don't have any. We have a second reading of ordinance. We have now for us ordinance number 1903.
Mayor Slack, ordinance 1903 is an ordinance adopting legislative amendment 24-01, amending provisions of the Dallas Development Code relating to the planning official and limited land use decisions and declaring an emergency. I'll just note briefly that when we brought this for the first reading, you'll recall there were some discrepancies between the planning commissions recommended ordinance and the ordinance that we presented to you for first reading. All of those discrepancies have been resolved and are, are fixed in this, this second reading ordinance that's before you, and were corrected as discussed at the last meeting. So, everything is as it should be, and the ordinance is ready for adoption. Again, it's being declared as an emergency because this is in response to a state law which is effective on January 1st of this year, and so this ordinance needs to be in place as soon as we can.
And just for the sake of people who aren't intimately familiar with the process, declaring it as an emergency does what?
Makes the ordinance effective upon the passage of the vote.
And signature by the mayor.
Any other discussion? Secretary, the roll call vote?
Counselor Barantos?
Yes.
Counselor Blosser?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jants?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Verden?
Yes.
Council President Schilling?
Yes.
Ordinance 1903 passes with a vote of eight to zero.
Have any other business? Debbie.
Well, Juan, I agree with Ann Heard about the address issue. I would, I would like to see if someone has their address written on the card, there's no reason for them to be blasting that to YouTube. I mean, before and, and since I've been a city councillor, I've had people at my home doing damage or all kinds of weird things, and granted, as a property owner, my address is public record, but even if it wa, it just makes it that much easier for kind of weirdos to, you know, disagree with you. I, I don't like that. I think they shouldn't have to state it for YouTube when it's on the card. Maybe require when they turn it in, you know, Kim can say, hey, you need your address on here.
I would require a change to our current policies, written policies.
Which, which the council's going to be taking up during the public administration committee in January, so that'll be a great opportunity to discuss that then.
David.
I'll, I'll endorse that point of view, and, and I guess this question is probably for Lane, because it certainly predates my time in Dallas. What was, what is the origin of that rule? What's the purpose of it? What, what was it intended to accomplish?
Predates my time, too. I think the idea is so that if-
You were born here.
Yes, yes, I should say my time at the dais. I think the purpose of it was so that if somebody presenting a public comment needed to be contacted and follow up to their comment, that we'd have a record of it, but it's, it's, you're perfectly right, that with the signup cards, they can provide that address information, and I had already talked with Kim about this, and we talked about it at the committee meeting, but under the public records law, if, if, if somebody just submits the card, that card is a public record and still would be accessible by somebody who wanted to ask for it, unless we include language on the card, or by signing that the person requests that they be, that their address not be made public, in which case then we can agree at their request not to make it public, so we can actually protect those from public records request, the addresses. But they will be available to city staff.
I like that idea, too, do you? Yeah.
I think I've already given some language to Kim, or at least the concept of it for-
It just removes one more barrier.
Strictly your policy, yeah.
This isn't something mandated by the public meetings or anything else like that. Yeah, well, then, I, I agree with Debbie totally.
Back to the Highway 51 issue, when ODOT was here a couple months ago, we had, we had heard that they received, they'd given a bunch of money to Polk County to heighten patrols out there, and I had asked to bring the sheriff in to kind of tell us what the plan is out there. Have you had any success with that?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Briggs. So, I reached out to the Polk County Sheriff a while back, and it took a little bit longer for him to respond than normal, but that's, you know, there's probably a lot of stuff going on. He did respond in saying that he would be happy to come and talk to the council, so I am just looking for a future work session to bring him in for about 15 minutes to address that with the council. So, you know, either on the 21st or sometime in February, we'll be able to get the Polk County Sheriff out here to, to address that.
I've also spoken with Anna, who's the person that was presenting from ODOT, our area supervisor, and the, all three jurisdictions are taking advantage of it, and they do have certain days that they actually put a higher emphasis on it, and I've heard people getting pulled over and seeing it myself. Is it slowing it down? Not enough. While I have the mic still, I just want to make a minor correction, so it doesn't get put in the minutes wrong. It's former President Schilling and President Larry Briggs.
Notice that, too.
I have another thing. So, I wanted to discuss or ask questions maybe about this polling that's taking place about the police department. Has that already begun?
Yes, so, the polling started today, and so, the polling will go through this week. Thank you for bringing that up, I meant to mention that. And so, we worked with Nelson Research Company out of Salem, we utilized them previously for polling that was done with the Parks and Recreation District concept that we looked at a year or two ago. And so, myself, our assistant city manager, a few other staff members had reviewed the questions ahead of time, worked with them on just some refinements to the questions, and they started doing their field work today. Again, the field work should go through this week, so certainly encourage you, if you get reached out to, either via text or via a phone call, to answer it, it's legitimate. We do want to hear from people, we want to know what their opinions are on the questions, so that is, that is actively going on.
And can we have a copy of what those questions are?
Send those to you via email.
So, one question I had specifically was, we got an email about including the ladder truck, which I'm not in favor of, and, and here's why. Congress, the US Congress passes a lot of bills that have other little things in there, and I believe, and that irritates me every time, but I believe this gives the public the same impression. We want a police station, oh, but we also want this. Not that we don't need a ladder truck, we do, but I think it's an inappropriate way to get that ladder truck. I think it's even going to skew the polling.
Yeah, and that's, that's why we included those questions in the polling, is to be able to kind of tease that out and see what kind of response we would have. So, I appreciate that feedback, and we'll see what the polling discovers.
Okay.
It's a reminder, we have an Urban Renewal Agency Board meeting right after this. Does anybody need a recess, or can we go straight into that? Are we good with that? Any other business? If not, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and I'll open the Urban Renewal Board and Directors. Can we use the same roll call we had before? We'll do that. All right.
On the recess.
Sorry.
I just need water after.
All right. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the December 9th Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Mike Schilling.
Speaking to my mic better.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Second is appointments to the Urban Renewal District Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. So, as we mentioned during the council meeting with other committees, the Urban Renewal District Advisory Committee also has some vacancies at the end of 2024, and in fact, we have three open positions for the Urban Renewal District Advisory Committee, and through our solicitation process, we received three applications. Those applications are included in attachment A, and all of them are, are eligible to serve in that position, and so there's a recommended motion at the bottom of page three of the packet, to move to appoint Helen Connolly, Troy Hazelton, and Trevor Peterson to serve on the Urban Renewal District Advisory Committee for terms ending December of 2028. You will notice that at least one of the candidates does not live inside the city limits of Dallas, that is not a requirement for service on that.
Question, are, are any of these three reappointments, are they all new?
One is a reappointment, and two are new.
Which is the re-
Trevor Peterson is being reappointed, would be reappointed.
It's all of the applicants?
Yes, these are the three, three people who applied. So moved.
Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Other business? If not, we'll call this meeting, January 6th, adjourned.